My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its right. Okay, everybody, we are going to do a little bit of adjustment on the agenda. We're gonna move item five up to after roll call, approve the meeting agenda. We're gonna have a presentation, and then Molly will be a few minutes late, and then we'll do the election of officers. So, that sound right?
Do we need to do a motion to approve changes?
Yeah, so that change of item eight will be the next up, so that'll bump up to before the election of officers. That'll be, that will be a presentation. So yeah, we need a motion.
Make a motion to first approve the meeting agenda, and then the presentation, number eight, and then bumping down the election of officers.
Motion by agenda, do we have a second? Second by Brenda. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and we'll do it by roll call. So, Ann?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Stacy?
I'm having a hard time hearing it comes in and out.
Okay, uh, did you hear what we were doing with the agenda?
No.
Okay, so what we are doing is, we're waiting for state, for Molly to show up, so we bumped up the approve the meeting agenda before election of officers, and then we are taking the presentation first, and then we are going to do the election of officers. So item eight on the agenda will be bumped up. So we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
And then, we have ayes from Greg and Ann. If you're in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda carries. We're ready for a presentation.
I want to give you a quick overview of staff development district-wide, and then I'll...
Can you hear me, Stacy?
Yes, again now.
Um, district-wide, high school-wise, and then Mr. Nelson will talk about, um, in the elementary. Overall, staff development, we have four basic areas that we would use our staff development funds for. The first one would be for conferences and trainings, and we'll have whole departments or certain teachers that will apply for funds for that, and they would do that through our staff development fund. They give us a rationale why the conference or training will be of value to them, their teaching, and their students. We've talked in admin meetings about how the REDACT implementation this next year is going to take up a large portion of our chunk of money for staff development. We also have staff development for our support staff, and that kind of comes in four basic areas through our district workshops in the fall for the most part, eight hours of in-service training. Our specialized co-op offers training as well for them, and then our support staff are also certified in CPI through the Crisis Prevention Institute, and that is really promoting positive behavior interactions with our specialized students when there is a behavior issue. Curriculum development, specifically at the high school, we go through our curriculum cycle that I presented on earlier this year, and so depending on where they are in the curriculum cycle, they'll get more hours to use for curriculum development. It also will depend on how many different courses they teach. The more courses they teach, the more dollars that are available, and then it also will depend on your department and subject curriculum. License renewal for our certified staff, there are five different areas that our teachers need to hit in their license renewal: positive behavior intervention, reading preparation, mental health, English learners, and cultural competency. And on the next slide, I kind of break down a little bit what we've done district-wide in that department. So for positive behavior intervention, for the past few years, we've had Lonnie Moore help us with that in our Leader and Me and Seven Habits training. Leader and Me is more focused in the elementary, whereas Seven Habits would be more focused in the high school. This past year, we did a book study for our teachers in those two areas as well that would have qualified for staff development. Two years ago, we had Willow Sweeney in to do our Top 20 training with our staff as well. Reading preparation, you'll notice in these next few, we do rely heavily on our in-house staff as experts to give some of our development hours. So in reading preparation and English learners, we relied on our English and ELL staff to provide those renewal hours, and then with mental health, we invite our LSS counselors and then our high school counselor to provide those. Mrs. Lage, this next staff development day is going to provide some development to our teachers on the LGETQ plus population. And then in cultural competency, last year, we had Derek Francis do kind of a year-long presentation to our staff on school climate equity and inclusion. Mr. Nelson, you want to add something to that one?
Other than we've had some teachers go to different workshops, it covers some of the social, emotional things recently as well.
We just met right before break with our staff development committee and kind of reviewed some of these plans and talked about where we could fill in for each of those four different categories this next upcoming year too, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we work with the committee that approves the hours and see where, what's needed coming up, and then try to hit those on our workshop the following year. So, so every teacher for their renewal is getting their hours for these five areas here, so they don't have to go to workshops outside of Pelican.
Questions on staff development?
Any questions? I don't hear any.
Like Laura talked about, next year's gonna be the big year with the REDACT that was put in, so as an elementary, we're gonna have training on our new math series we're getting next year, as well as the REDACT that was put in, so it's gonna be a lot of extra things for staff developers, extra training.
So when will that all take place? Is that in stages?
The, uh, so the bridges we're getting, we waited a year because I knew the third edition curriculum comes out, and like our number corner that's part of that, the third edition came out, but we got it like middle of August. So I'm assuming talking with the company that we won't get the new materials for the regular math curriculum probably at middle of August. Ideally, it'd be nice to get it like before, so we could do some training like at, in the end of the school year or in summer, but we can't do the training if we don't have the new materials. And the REDACT, all that, we're working on getting the timeline all that finalized, but we need to have our plan in place by June, and I know the template for that doesn't come out till March, so it'll be a busy spring working on that timeline.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, we'll move on. So, next item up will be the election of officers. So, hopefully I get this procedure right again, but we have a nomination for chair. We have a nomination for chair. I'm nominated by Greg. Do we have any other nominations for chair? Any nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? Okay. Closed nominations, and I am to be chair by acclamation. Thank you. Do we have a nomination for vice chair? I'll nominate Ann Peterson. We have a nomination for Ann Peterson. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, hearing no other nominations, we'll close, and Ann is elected vice chair by acclamation. Do we have a nomination for clerk? I'll nominate Brenda. Do we have a nomination, any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? There are no other nominations, we'll close nominations, and Brenda is clerk by acclamation. Do we have a nomination for treasurer?
I'll nominate Molly.
Okay, we have a nomination for Molly. Do we have any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing no other nominations, we'll close nominations, and Molly elected by acclamation. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, we have a point committees. I don't think there's anything formal for this, is there? Okay, so we have finance committee. Anybody showing interest in finance committee?
We're required to serve on one, right?
Right.
I think, I mean, I recall that being one of the board member responsibilities. Um, I mean, I've served on the policy committee for a long time, I'm not interested in serving on it anymore, I prefer doing something else.
Okay.
But at the same time, if that significantly impacts how things line up, I'm flexible, but I, I've been on that committee for five years, ever since I've been on the board.
Okay.
So I'm ready to shift gears and transfer over to others.
Okay.
For whatever that's worth.
Okay. Is there a requirement the board chair be on finance with negotiation, or?
We've just done that in the past, it's worked well, with the board chair being on the finance because of negotiations.
Okay. If I could do finance again. Who wants to be on policy committee? Maybe start that.
I'm fine with either, so it doesn't matter, somebody has a preference.
I don't have preference with them, they're year old, so. Either one's fine with me.
If you're interested, speak up.
I would stay on finance unless somebody else would want to.
You want to be on finance, Brenda?
Yeah.
That'd be my preference too, John, but yeah, I'm here to work with everybody, you know. All that shakes out.
So Greg wants to be on finance?
I do.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, who would like to be on policy?
I'd have me.
Okay, Molly? Stacy?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Ann?
I'm good.
Okay. Do we need alternates on any of these, or?
Last year, we had an alternate on finance.
Okay. Who would like to be the alternate for finance?
I can be, since I was on it, yeah.
Veteran, okay. Molly will be the alternate, okay. Okay, good of those. All right, we'll move on. Opportunity of visitors to address the board. Looks like we don't have to slow down there, so we'll move on to acknowledgements. I guess Mr. Corr thinks I need to be acknowledged or something here, so. Completion of the MSBA Leadership Development Workshop Series. Uh, we gotta really thank our local businesses for their support and involvement with the Commercial Drivers License course offerings. And the Pelican Rapids Food Shelf for the raised funds and food along with the high school and the elementary school. Do we need to add?
Yeah, congratulations to Mr. Carter on completion of all four phases, and thanks for your work with MSBA. Uh, want to thank our local businesses that require the CDL. We had a meeting before the winter break to talk about offering a CDL class, got a lot of input from them, what they would like to see, and how we can work together down the road, so we're gonna have another meeting down the road with them, and then we're gonna spread the word to see if we can get more businesses in that area to attend that meeting and partner with us. So, we're gonna be offering the class, starting second semester here at the high school, so students can sign up for a CDL class, and then we're gonna offer it through community ed, so anyone in the community can sign up for the class too. And they will, if they're interested, they will talk to Mr. Joczewski, the students will, or Mrs. Lage, and if they're interested in community ed, they'll talk to Ms. Wanter or Mr. Hoggard to sign up for that. So that's who they should contact if interested. Of course, students will know who to go to, but the community, that might take some time to get the word out, so, but that's a great offering that we can offer. We're working with M State, Mrs. Jay will, I'm sure, will present when she has more of the information here at the next board meeting, so.
Okay. And also for the food shelf, working with us, we had a healthy competition, but the winner was, is the food shelf and the money that was raised in the food that was raised for the food shelf, so, but thank you for partnering with us to have a nice competition between the schools. Thank you. So we have some administrative reports. And Mr. Sanchez, you want to, you have a report for us?
Um, upcoming events for at the Bay, Winter Regional Conference, next Wednesday, January 10th, and then after that, January 24th, the Wildlife Team will be competing in Crookston. And Miss Hall's Spanish class, I've been fundraising for the trip, and they sold $1,000 off of cookbooks that the students all made, there was like a lot of recipes they all gathered. And January 19th, they will be fundraising again, the boys basketball team.
Okay, thanks.
So, earlier in December, the CNA class had their clinicals at the nursing home, and they also have their state testing next week, and then as SAD goes, um, earlier in November, actually, we had a speaker come from Northern Lights Pulse, who kind of works closely with SAD, so it was interesting to hear him. And then they also went to the elementary to help the first graders make gingerbread houses, and then also during our activity day, we made ornaments for the residents at the nursing home as well for their Christmas trees. Yeah, along the same lines of the activity day, right before Christmas break, that was really fun. We had a whole bunch of different things, from the walleye fishing thing, baking, bookmarks, almost anything we had it. I think it was really fun to have something a little different again before winter break.
And ended with a concert.
Yep.
Concert of students. Okay, thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Right. Hi, this is Paddy. Uh, finance report for the calendar end of 2023, we'll be reporting today on December. Overall, pretty busy month, but holidays coming in and making sure that we get everything out of time. Uh, we started our beginning balance and our investments just a little over $6 million. Uh, we've received a little over a million dollars in state and federal aid. Uh, a lot of money from the free meal reimbursement program is coming in, and so far it's been covering 100% of the meals. In addition to, there's a grant that we received for fresh fruits and vegetables, so we're starting to see those funds come in, which is really, really great. Heard really good feedback from the elementary staff regarding just the health adoption that we are offering our students in the afternoon, so we'll continue to apply for that grant as long as we can, and we're eligible for it. I withdrew a million dollars to put it into our checking account, so you see that withdrawal there of just a little over a million dollars, just to make sure that we have enough cash on hand in all of our obligations. At the end of the month, we had six one, 6.1 million dollars in our investment account, so, and if you scroll to the right, we'll see it there. Yep, perfect, so again, very busy month in terms of all the aid that's flowing around. Uh, in terms of cash flow, all the monies that are coming in, we, we, uh, we had deposits into the account of 1.2 million dollars, $1 million is what we pulled from our investment accounts. Others, as you can see, student activity account is a big one of like $29,000 that has to do with a lot of the fundraising that are going on, so kudos to all the advisors and coaches for fundraising really hard. Uh, we all, we're also seeing a little bit of increase in our trust account. Uh, our trust account is our scholarship accounts with 6 point, or $6,300 there. Uh, we're starting to establish a lot of good, good scholarships. We've been in communication with Pelican Dental, in addition to the Raisin Martha Hoggins Scholarship, so, uh, lots of, lots of coming in from the community to establish those great relationships and partnerships. Uh, accounts payable was just a little over $700,000, very, very common for this month. Um, and our payroll was just a little over $400,000, again, just two pay periods, pretty, 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 uh, pretty regular, pretty normal for the month of December. Um, at the end of the day, we had just a little over $400,000 cash in and in our checking account, so total cash between investments and cash on hand in our checking account was about 6.5 million dollars. Uh, last month, we certified the levy, which is gonna pay next year, which is really great. Um, our levy keeps, keeps coming down, or I'm sorry, keeps going up, and our taxpayers' base, or our tax rate keeps going down, which is really good, that means we're really, really healthy fiscally. Uh, Big Rock's coming up for the month of January, we have our large fund payment, which is due at the end of January, this is the money that we collect in part from all of our tax base within our district, and then we pay back that building fund, and so you'll see that, that particular payment at the end of the next, next board meeting. Uh, we'll go to page number two. Uh, page number two, you're gonna see quite a few journal entries, a lot of it has to do with concession stands. Um, concession stands is very busy right now with all the competitions that are going on, and a lot of the times, our activities like two for parent night and things like that, like to use their fundraising account for some candies and things like that for the benefit of the whole group and congratulate parents, so you see a lot of those journal entries. Then with guidance from the state, you're gonna see a building, I quote it as new building journal entry, with guidance from the state with the new multi-use building, they simply said, make sure you use this particular general code, which I created just to make sure that we isolate all of those dollars, so we know exactly how much we've spent in the multi-use building, so that's what those journal entries are for. Then the rest of the pages, like always, it's all the payables that are paid in the district. Uh, that's all I have for the treasuries report. Does anybody have any questions regarding the cash flow of the district, some of the things that happened in the month of December? Um, so yeah, that's all I have for you guys.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Corr.
I got a few, a few items, enrollment, you know, in in December, rated around 835 students, 956, we included early childhood programs, which is good. Um, I'm guessing that we're gonna have some weather coming, so just a reminder of snow days, that we have two built-in snow days, so if we have a snow day coming up, we don't make it up, um, we have two of those built in. Uh, days three through seven, after days one and two, if we have a third day with snow day, then that will be e-learning, e-learning day, okay? Um, school board agenda items tonight on the agenda, have a few things here to talk about. First one is under business items, A, and that's the resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions, so we do this every year in January, um, and the administration will be planning for next year, and they'll be looking at budget, looking at staffing, and looking at enrollment, so if there's anything there, then we would bring that forward to the board. The next item is non-certified staff payout for unused sick leave, so what we talked with our finance committee here this fall was to bring forward a payout for unused sick days to our support staff. So currently, they're at 65 days that they can max out, which means they've been here a while. We would increase that to 80 if the board would approve tonight, and once they would go over 80, then they would have a payout at the end of the year. For nine and 10 month, the payout would be at the end of June, for 12-month employees, that would, payout would be July 15th. So they would be paid out at the employees currently hourly rate, that's what they would be paid out at, okay? So, they've been here a long time, and they haven't used their sick days, what happens if they go over that, they're just losing them. So when I went and met with support staff to talk about the changes in paying things like that, met with their groups, this is what they would like to see, so that's why we are bringing this forward, we met with the finance committee, finance committee is recommending to the board, and that's what we're bringing forward tonight. Any questions with this? Okay, um, the next one is the contract for Lakeland Mental Health, and that is the contract that we have services provided to our staff, they get three sessions that are free, and that's what they have for mental health. If they would go past the three sessions, then they would have to cover that, but the school district covers three right now for each employee if needed. So that's the contract. On that, you do, that's on the agenda tonight. The other ones are the first reading and second reading for policies. Policy committee has, has reviewed these policies, policy 425, 621, 802, and 805, um, they have reviewed them, they're bringing them forward to the school board to approve the first reading and the second reading, and they're also MSBA recommended. Okay, any questions there? Okay, MSBA conference is January 11th and 12th, so that's next week. Teacher workshop will be January 15th, um, so that's what we have going on in January.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Corr? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent items. So item A will be approved, 18 minutes, December 13th, 2023, regular school board meeting. B, financial claims and December bills. C, treasures report. D, accept donations, student accounts, $80 lower Klimic. Viking Boutique, $80 lower Klimic. PRHS Scholarship Fund in memory of Erling Kelting, $50 from anonymous. We have Rex and Linda Hoggins Scholarship, $100, Marty Christensen. I am a personnel, approve the resignation of David Brown as English teacher at PRHS. Prove the resignation of Sherry Redorn as administrative assistant at Viking Elementary. Prove the hire of Maria Poglano Tapia, Tapia, as part-time head start special ed paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. And approve the hire of Devon Severson as English teacher at PRHS. So do we have a motion for the consent items?
Under the motion to approve the consent items.
Okay, motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Molly? Discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion on the consent items, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call again. Aye and aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Okay, Greg?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
And consent items carried. We're on to business items. Approve the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons thereof. So do we have a motion and a second for that?
I'll move to approve the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons thereof.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brenda. This is a resolution. So I'll try and make it quick here. Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reduction in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas in the financial position, the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures immediately, and whereas if it has been a reduction in student enrollment, and whereas if the reduction in expenditures, a decrease in student enrollment must include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas if a determination must be made as to which teacher's contract must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, and affecting discontinuance of positions. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district 548 as follows, that the school board hereby directs superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, and as a result, the reduction in enrollment make recommendations to the school board for discontinuance of programs, curtailments of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions. Now, this is something we've done every year, so I should have this memorized by now, so. Anyway, so this is a resolution, so Molly, how do you resolve? Brenda?
Yes.
Yes. Ann?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Resolution carries. B, approve approval of the non-certified staff payout for unused sick leave.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-certified staff payout for unused sick leave.
Okay, a motion by Brenda?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye, and this will be roll call again. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye, Ann?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the employee assistance program agreement with Lakeland Mental Health Center for January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the employee assistant program agreement with Lakeland Mental Health Center for January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2025.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
Is there? I know it's with Lakeland Mental Health Center, I'm not real familiar with all the services they offer, but does any of that include physical wellness, financial wellness, any sort of those types of services, or are those covered by other organizations that staff and other folks at school can utilize?
So for the physical part, the wellness committee, um, we put that together here with Lakeland, it's just they need support with, if they, with mental health, they need services that they need that way.
Although I'd like the physical. Physical wellness, financial wellness pieces, are those covered in any capacity through different speakers or presentations that are offered?
They have them.
Our life insurance company offers services for employees who are affected by life insurance.
Thank you.
And I see it does, in the contract, what services are available, it says trainings and seminars and onsite visits by professionals to resolve conflicts. Let's facilitate discussion, increase morale, provide crisis intervention services, and also critical incident stress debriefing, so the reimbursement rate that we would pay, pay them. That would be some available, I guess, too. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Greg's motion signify by saying aye, so we roll call again. So I'll start this time, so I'm an aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the first reading of policy 425, staff development.
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Ann, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, a roll call again. Ann?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Okay, I'm an aye. Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one, approve the second reading of the following policies. 621, literacy and Read Act. 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and materials. 805, waste reduction and recycling.
Make the motion.
A motion by Ann, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on the second reading? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Ann's motion signify by saying aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Greg?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, last part, upcoming meetings, we have the MSBA conference next week, November 12th. We have a regular meeting February 21st at 7:00 PM with a work session at 6:00 PM. And then we have a regular meeting in March, and it is on a Monday, and that is Monday, March 18th at 6:00 PM. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Molly?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda, any discussion on adjourning? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye, and it will be roll call again, so Stacy?
Aye.
Aye. Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?